And welcome, everybody. This time, I will call the Monday, April 17th, 2023, regular meeting of the Harney County Board of Commissioners to order, and I will ask Commissioner Lewis Weatherspoon to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation.
Please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you today, Lord, thanking you for all the blessings you've given us. We thank you for watching over us, watching over Harney County, and we pray, Lord, that you will continue to do so. Lord, be with us in this meeting tonight, and may everything that we do be according to your will and to glorify you. Lord, we ask your blessings on our first responders and our law enforcement and our military. These things we ask, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, sir. We'll now consider any additions and deletions to the published agenda. Hearing none, we'll accept the motion.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion and a second. Do you accept the agenda as published?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Without objection.
Mr. Chair, if I might ask for just a moment of personal privilege before we consider the consent agenda, just to mention, Item K had the honor on Thursday of last week to represent this board, to present a proclamation from this board, representing, honoring Dr. Linda Moore Robinson for her over 40 years of service to the citizens of Harney County in the health field, and it was a really special night, and I just didn't want that just to go through with the consent agenda without a little bit of special recognition here tonight. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, for that recognition. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Without objection, case. At this time, I will now open the floor for public comment. The hearing consists of 30 minutes. Each presenter will have three minutes. I have one on the list today, Mr. Jerry Rivas. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Jerry Rivas, 364 Twin Ponds Road. You know, as I listen to the words of the Pledge of Allegiance, it says liberty and justice for all, and that is such a lie. There's not justice for everybody in this country or in this county. Where was the justice for John Livingston? Somebody, please tell me, where's the justice for the Finch's? The Highway Patrol has finished their investigation into the accident that killed the Finch family. Trooper LaTarte was driving 95 miles an hour down Highway 210. And I hear this mantra that so many police officers use, oh, do this for your safety and mine, do that for your safety and mine. So did he kill them for their safety, or did he kill them for his safety? Was he protecting us from an evil speeder? Was he protecting us from a fictitious tag holder? And now that the investigation is done, where are the charges? Where's the Lord High Sheriff to stand before the people of Harney County that he's supposed to represent? Why, how come this guy's not brought up on charges? Why? Why is life so cheap in North Carolina when there's a police officer involved? Does anybody in this room, do you feel like that guy was protecting and serving you by driving 95 miles an hour in a 45 mile an hour zone? If I get a ticket going 15 miles over the limit, I get written for reckless driving, and I lose my license for 30 days. He was doing 50 miles over the limit. And the report, there's a big lie on there. I have talked to three eyewitnesses. One of them was on TV. He did not have his siren and lights on. Right before he hit the finches, he would give one blip of his siren, he didn't turn the lights on until after his vehicle came to arrest. But this is just more, more blue line bull crap of how these SOBs stick up for each other and lie and cover for one another. But, you know, stop saying the Pledge of Allegiance up here, because there is no justice. There isn't. There is if you've got money, or if you've got a badge, or if you've got power, but for us, those regular people, there's no justice. I filed an appeal with the North Carolina Court of Appeals one time, cost $4,000. So you can buy some justice, but it ain't free, and it damn sure ain't cheap. But I want to know, where's Wayne Coates? How come you haven't heard a word out of that publicity hound, the Lord High Sheriff? Don't look at me like that. Don't look at me like that, you.
Mr. Rivas, thank you for your comments, sir.
But, you know, it's, y'all need to do something. This has got to stop.
Thank you, sir. This time, I will now close the floor for public comment. We will move on to a public hearing regarding the lease of a county property to Lamar. It's a billboard on Main Street in Lillington.
As foremen, before I open up the public hearing, just give a refresher of what this is. This is a ground lease for Lamar. These are billboards that currently exist along 401 before he crossed the river going into Lillington. You know, the first one, which is a digital one, and there's two more. So we're talking about those billboards. The proposed lease is for 10 years at $2,100 per year, which is in line with other ground leases for billboards that we have on that stretch right there. It's at the same. And then if they decide to digitize it, it would go up to $6,000 a year, which again is in line with the market on that. So, and again, this is just the ground lease. We do own the billboards themselves, as owned by Lamar, and they lease out the space on there. So just clear for the public that we're just talking about the actual ground lease.
Any questions, comments, before I open the floor for a public hearing?
Could you, could you, wouldn't you say the lease would be if they digitized?
$6,000 a year.
Six thousand, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, this time, I'll now open the floor for public hearing regarding the lease of the county property to Lamar. If anybody would like to speak for or against, now is your time. Seeing nobody move, I am going to now close the floor of the public hearing, and I will now entertain a motion regarding the lease.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the lease of county property to Lamar for a billboard. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's unanimously, Madam Clerk. Okay, item number seven, Crossroads Alliance.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Mr. Williams a few questions, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all for being here tonight.
Yep.
We left this last week with some things you were going to go back and find out for us. As far as a voting member, it's my understanding that the other entities, other governments have a business leader from their communities that are actually the voting members and the elected officials from whatever board or the ex-official members. Is it the intent of your board to allow this board, should we commit to this, to have a voting member appointed by this body and two ex-official members appointed by this body?
Yes, sir. So each town that's a part of the alliance gets four voting members to the board, three of which are private, people from the private industry, and then one voting member that's from their representative or respective boards. And then the mayors of each town are ex officio, and city managers are ex officio. So our board, in discussing with our chairman, is willing to grant the county's two ex officio seats for you to appoint two commissioners at your choice, whoever you all would decide, and then a private, our board would vote to approve the private citizen position. Yes, sir.
I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman. I'd make the motion that we approve.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
I had asked him to look at some issues sitting around, disagreement. And one of the main issues that I'm looking at is, and the main issue that I want to, you to address, is the hiring of, well, we can't control what manufacturer, what companies come in under this training center. But we certainly can't control how many employees that are hired from Harney County. I have a serious concern on that, because I have seen in the past, these big, huge companies come in, and they promised us they're going to hire so many employees from Harney County. And to my knowledge, from the past, that has not hap, that didn't happen. So I want to know if they're, if you're going to give us some kind of agreement, or how many, I know you can't give us a total, number, whatever, but you can give us something in that agreement saying that Harney County employees will be hired, because $5 million is a lot of money for us to invest, and all the surrounding counties get to hire employees, and none of them come from Harney County. But a few, but a selective few.
Sure. So our hope, you know, we're already starting the conversation, we've started the conversation with the community college, we're going to be engaging the public schools, we'll start a homegrown effort, grassroots effort, to train the folks here in Harney County. The building's located in Dunn, but it will be accessible to the rest of Harney County. As for the companies that locate in Dunn or in Harney County who use the facility, we can't really, I don't know that we have a say in where those employees come from, but I think the municipalities in the county can use their incentive power, what incentives they grant, to give those companies more incentives to hire local employees. But as far as our role in producing local employees for those companies, I'm not sure how strong a role we have in that. But certainly, we want to train those in Dunn and Harney County at the facility. That's our, that's our intent. That's why we're partnering with the community college and the public schools.
Well, it has been done before, because when it was built in the hotel in Dunn, there was an incentive to hire so many employees from the county, Harney County, but that facility was built in Harney County. I just don't want us to invest $5 million in something that's going to benefit the surrounding counties and not benefit Harney County. And I gotta say, it's much needed here. It's much needed here, and I'm just hoping that we can benefit from it, because we really do need to benefit from it.
Yes, ma'am. And I, you know, I'll go back, the alliance's central focus, the reason it was put together was, you know, we talk about the median household income in eastern part of Harney County and Johnston County, those communities along the 95 corridor, it's almost two different counties when you look at the median household income. The median household income in Dunn is about half or 60% lower than the state average, and about 40, the county average is 40% lower than the state average, and the city's 60% lower. So we certainly are focused on hiring and getting good quality jobs for the people of Dunn and training them for those jobs in Harney County as well. I wanted to recognize our board members. We did that last week. We've got some different board members here today. Former mayor of Four Oaks, Lemon Parker, who's an ex officio member of our board, and Andy Hardy from Four Oaks, who's a voting member. He's mayor pro temp in town of Four Oaks and CFO at South River by trade. And then Mr. Walter Massey from Dunn, retired from Duke Energy, is a voting member of our board as well.
Well, I'm not interested in the voting members, because I'm not a voting member. I'm interested in what you're going to do for Harney County. That's what I'm interested in, the jobs in Harney County. And I'm being very honest about this, because this is a serious issue for me. And I know how much is needed here for Harney County, and I don't want to spend our money, $5 million, and all the employees that you are going to be training and hiring are going to be coming from the surrounding counties. That's, that's my issue.
Right.
So I know you, I asked you to go back last, when we had the meeting last, two weeks ago, and see if you could come up with anything that would give us some guarantee that you would be hired from all surrounding counties, Johnson County and Harney County. Is there any other counties involved in this?
When you say we'll be hiring?
No, you are, won't be hired.
Right.
None, no one here would be hired.
Our goal was to create a pipeline from the local schools in Harney County.
Right.
To this facility, train those students to get ready for jobs that Christian and I helped recruit to the Harney County area. So.
Can we have some guarantee that you're going to be addressing that with schools here in Harney County?
I'm sorry, say again.
And do you have some guarantee that you're going to be addressing that with the schools here in Harney County? Because that's how you're going to get employees.
Right. We can guarantee you we'll have the conversation, and we hope we'll be doing that soon.
Well, I certainly hope so.
Yes, ma'am.
You hear that?
I mean, it starts with a conversation and informing the students about the opportunities that these jobs have. I think that's on all of us as public officials and leaders, to let the students and their parents know. You know, used to, people started talking to these students when they were in 12th grade, and by 12th grade, they've usually already got a plan, most of them, and now they're starting a conversation in 8th grade. So we want to get the public schools involved, even the middle schools, and make them a partner in the facility as well. And even set up tours, field trips, you know, for those middle school students and high school students to see the facilities.
But if you can do that, that sounds like something that's reasonable, because that's where it starts at, in the schools. We've got to start working with these high school kids when they first hit high school, and even earlier than that, in order for us to train them and get them trained for the workforce. I would suggest even going further back than just high school.
Certainly. As I said, you know, there's thousands of students in Harney County schools now who aren't going to Chapel Hill or Raleigh or ECU or UNCW, and they're searching for an opportunity, and I think this can be that opportunity. That's our goal.
That's, that's the answer I want to hear. I don't want to spend, vote, spend that much money, $5 million, and it not be a benefit to us. And if you're going to address it through the school system, that is the right way to do it. to do it.
Mr. Williams, you mentioned, um, you said that, uh, you were going to be doing IT training, is that correct?
Say again, I'm sorry.
You, you said that you would be doing IT training in Dunn, is that correct?
That'll be one of the components of this building, yes, sir.
Okay. I mean, what companies do you anticipate coming in that's going to have a great need for IT personnel?
Well, I think most companies, whether it's life science or ag tech, I mean, there's sophisticated technology associated with all those companies. We're talking about information technology, software programming, cybersecurity. All those companies use those programs.
Okay. All right. One thing that, um, hasn't been decided, or at least I haven't heard it, uh, discussed, is, um, how this five million dollars is going to be transferred from Harnett County to the alliance. Are you looking lump sum? You looking to equal payments? You looking payments as the, uh, work on the building is done? Um, you know, I, I haven't heard any of that discussed.
Sure. We don't have, County Manager and I met and discussed that, and I assured him that, you know, we were asking for the money now, but we're not looking at lump sum tomorrow. If you all were fortunate to receive funding, commitment from you all tonight, uh, renovation doesn't start at the facility until later this year, first of twenty-four, and that was when that, that's when that money will be needed. Uh, we've got our half now, and that's when we'll activate our half as well. So we can have those discussions about what's, certainly what works best for the county. Um, we don't want to put you in a complicated situation. We don't necessarily need the money upfront. We're not looking at a five million dollar check upfront, uh, just a commitment in principle to work and be fifty-fifty partners on the cost.
I think it would make, uh, a little more, um, I think it'd be a little better if we decided that upfront before we committed the money, uh, if we decide how it's going to be paid out and who's going to pay it.
I'll leave that up to you all. I'm just here to say that we're not looking at lump sum upfront, you know. I think Brent has the information and has, has got the knowledge he needs to make that decision, what's best for Harnett County.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, um, I know there are many factors that go into, uh, bringing jobs to Harnett County or Dunn or Four Oaks or Johnson County or wherever it may be, but certainly, uh, uh, the workforce is a vital one. So, uh, in, in principle, I, I think that the concept is certainly sound. I think there are a number of questions as I listen from, from our board, um, and, and I don't know that we are in a place tonight as, uh, a board, at least from my perspective, to, um, try to get into and work through and handle all those details. But I think if it's something that we see that we would like to have further discussions on, I think it'd be good to allow Mr. Williams and Mr. Trout to get together and take what has been said in, in our discussions and, you know, let, let's see what it looks like. And then we can make that decision, yes, no, maybe tweak this, tweak that, whatever. I just, uh, I know, I know there are a lot of questions. I just don't know that we're really getting anywhere, um, without something black and white to look at. It's kind of where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I'd like to yield back to Vice Chairman Morrison, I know that you had the word "motion" come out of your mouth.
Yeah, I was saying, what, what I was alluding to was making a motion to tentatively approve this and then implement what Mr. Matthews was talking about, let staff work with Mr. Williams, reduce all this to writing, and bring it back to us.
And do I hear that in form?
I'll put that in form of a motion.
Can I say one thing? What a motion.
I have a motion on the floor at the moment. I'll open it for discussion.
Okay.
Turn on the motion on the floor.
I'll second that for further discussion.
All right, now I have a motion and a second in order to, uh...
What, what I'd love, love to see, and I think that's what Mr. Matthews has just alluded to, and may answer the gentle lady's question, is if the two of y'all will get together and reduce this to writing and get, then email it out to us, tentatively, we're approving it based on it getting reduced to writing and everything, be like it should be.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, and I'll open the floor for discussion. You finish, sir.
I thought that's.
I want to have one thing to, um, this is very important to Harnett County and the surrounding counties, Johnson County and Harnett County, is, uh, I wanted to know if the state is putting any funding into this. The state is putting funding into this, right?
Yes, ma'am. They already.
That's, that's what I want to know.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. That's all.
So, we, we funded the, the engineering and design. We've received that money from the state. The alliance is solely responsible for the cost of that, and we've got half the money for the renovation.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it. Since we have a, um, Economic Development Partnership meeting Wednesday morning, would it be prudent to, uh, put this off until after that meeting?
Well, currently I have a motion and a second on the floor. That could be up for discussion.
But a motion to table overrides that, I'm sorry.
I have a motion to table this until?
No, I haven't made a motion to table it. I ask a question. Would it be prudent if we did that?
Personally, I believe that if we hand this over to staff like it was discussed, and they can hammer out some details and then get back to us, so it's not wasting, necessarily saying it's wasting our time, so we're not sitting here just kicking this back and forth and having the conversation this way, we can have staff work with each other and come back with us once they have a plan.
But if there's no urgency, if that's what I heard, uh, Mr. Williams say a while ago, there's no urgency for an immediate payment, then what's another couple of weeks?
Aren't we not supposed to be the ones to vote on this?
Yes. And the staff will come back to us.
I think that we're going to want to supposedly be voting on this, not the Economic Development Department. And then, any questions would be, that we need to address with the, uh, Economic Development, um, committee or whatever, it certainly can be addressed. I'm sure that these gentlemen will be open to, to addressing their issues as well. Is that not right?
That's correct. And we, as I mentioned last week, or I hope I did, Harold and any member of our board would make ourselves available to meet with the partnership board, of course, upon their request. Uh, we wouldn't want to invite ourselves, but, um, would be willing to sit down with them and talk about this project or any other projects we can work together on.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, Mr. Morris, please, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm, I'm understanding the motion, uh, that we would be, uh, asking Mr. Trout, Mr. Williams to get together, work through the details, and then come back to us for a final decision, thumbs up, thumbs down.
That is correct, sir.
Is that where we are?
Oh, okay. I, I didn't understand that was the motion. That I can go along with.
Is that incorrect?
Yeah, I, what, what I had said was, we're saying that as it stands, we're going to approve it, but we just want y'all to reduce it to writing and bring it back to us.
For flying from group. Yeah, that was my understanding as well from the motion that, because we don't have those details in any way, shape, or form.
Now that, now that you know the parameters.
I have numerous things to be included, that, that we've been talking about to be included, that I've heard from the board, that we need to reduce it to writing, so if you didn't like something, you could amend it.
That's right.
And consider it. So this would be a non-binding vote, but it would be giving me direction to move forward and working on this rather than not working on it.
That's right. You would have a consensus to proceed on and bring it back to us.
Right. There's a lot of work to it.
That's not what Brooke said.
Are all the members clear on the current motion? Is there any further discussion? And I'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here's your man, Miss Lee, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing what you come back with.
Yes, sir.
All right, brings us to the County Manager's Report. Mr. Trout.
Thank you. Um, first thing I want to do is, um, mention that I attended, as well as Commissioner McCoy and Commissioner Matthews, the Rotary Gala Night on Saturday here in Wellington, and we received a very nice gift of a painting of the namesake of our county, Corneas Harnet, Harnet, excuse me, um, that, uh, is very, very interesting to see. Learned a lot of history about Mr. Harnet and, uh, the work that he did back in the revolution. Uh, it's a very good painting, and, uh, now we'll have to figure out, but it's in the conference room now, if you'd like to see it after the meeting, um, and we'll need to determine a place to, to hang that up. So, um, there are a couple of budget amendments that you received that I want to make sure and point out, we need approval of those. There were two amendments that had to be amended from their original amount that they were provided to you based on a contract change that we had for our solid waste, uh, uh, end loader purchase of a hundred and three thousand. And then the other is, there were two amendments that were given to you, um, excuse me, on Friday, that were for expenses through the Fleet Department, one for the purchase of a vehicle, and others for some purchase of items to, uh, amend in their budget. So wanted to bring those out, that they weren't initially, those two items weren't initially in the first packet run. Otherwise, Chair, I just need approval of the budget amendments, and then the tax rebates, refunds, and releases in separate motions, please.
Thank you, sir. Um, Commissioners, you have the budget amendments in front of you as requested by the Finance Director. Entertain a motion to approve the budget amendments.
So move.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendments as requested by the Finance Director. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here's your man, Miss Lee, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
And, um, you also have the tax rebates, refunds, and releases as requested by the Tax Administrator in front of you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve tax rebates, refunds, and releases as requested by the Tax Administrator.
Sir, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the tax rebates, refunds, and releases requested by the Tax Administrator. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Without objection, Madam Clerk. We have an item under new business. The jet port is requesting, uh, the Board of Commissioners to accept a work authorization for professional services with Parish and Partners for the construction phase of the jet port terminal. Uh, you see, there's a total of eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars, uh, which is provided through a state capital inf, uh, infrastructure fund grant. Would anybody else like to speak on that? Would you like to brief us there?
I would, please.
Thank you.
Um, this work authorization relates to the construction of the terminal out of the jet port. Um, we were submitted this, uh, when the decision was made by the board to make a change to Parish and Partners, there was not a work authorization at that point for that work, um, and we were due to start. Due to the graciousness of, of Parish and Partners, they went ahead and moved forward with the project and managing it and administrating it. But part of that process, we had to negotiate and develop a work authorization with them. They submitted it to us. We went through the process of having an independent fee estimate done to confirm whether or not the fee that they were proposing was in line with appropriate fees for the construction project. That analysis came back and showed that there was a variance of only four point four percent based on what the independent fee estimate was, was, uh, created. So there was four point four percent higher than what the independent fee estimate generated. In talking, the state requires, uh, to be within ten percent in order to be able to be accepted, um, so we're within that timeline. Um, with this, though, the SCIF funding did not require us to have state approval, so we're able to now move this forward with your approval. We will have our agreement for our engineering firm and architect, uh, for this project, and I recommend approval of this work authorization and answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this, uh, authorization.
Second.
A motion and a second in order to approve the work authorization for professional services with Parish and Partners. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here's your man, Miss Lee, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Sir, do we have a need for closed session?
No.
All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
A motion and a second to adjourn. We are adjourned.